All right, good evening. I'd like to call to meeting, the call to order this meeting of the regular school board Round Lake 116 Board of Education meeting here in the Round Lake High School Media Center on December the sixth at seven PM. If I could, let me get a roll call, please.
Mr. Francisco?
Here.
Mrs. McInley?
Here.
Mr. Tavera?
Here.
Mr. Jewett?
Here.
Mrs. Klingler?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
All right, if we could stand and Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God and equal liberty and justice for all.
Board members and those presenting, remember to make sure you're holding down the microphone button so that everyone online can hear you speaking. Also, board members, please make sure cell phones are on silent and off of the table. First up is an approval of meeting agendas. We have an agenda in front of us. Any questions in regarding to the agenda? If not, let's give a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second by Ms. Lee. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
We have an approved agenda. First up on that approved agenda is the Department of Professional Learning update.
Hello, good evening, everyone. As always, I am excited to talk about PD tonight. You have heard me talk about professional learning in a couple of different contexts. And you've heard me talk about our main goals, which are to offer choice, to support our leaders, and to provide the highest quality PD around. And you've also heard me talk about the whats of our PD. So you've heard me describe the mentoring program and the coaching program and our administrator induction program and all that. But tonight, I would like to do something a little bit different. Specifically, I want to talk about communication and collaboration. And why I would like to talk about these is because this is basically the glue that holds everything else together. So without these things, we do not have professional learning. But when we do these well, we have more engaging, more effective PD. Also, looking at our communication pillars and looking at the way that we collaborate with other departments, I think will actually give you a more, I guess, unique view of how staff experience the PD in our district. So with that said, we're going to look at a couple of the communication pillars. So as I say, we're going to look at some of the, there we go. All right, so let's take a look at a couple of the key communication pieces, starting with the YouTube channel, if we could. So our YouTube channel, this is the Brain Child and is currently maintained by our PD specialist, Melinda Mallow. Now she comes in and updates continually based on what we might need to highlight at the time. So this landing page, if you looked at this video beforehand, this is just a general overview of the PD in our district. But we also are in the process of catering specific for specific purposes. For example, how to use Performance Matters, our registration system. For example, badging and everything that comes with that. So this is, this is not where you would go to get like deep, in-depth professional learning. This is where you go when you need to learn something quickly on Performance Matters. It's handy, it's familiar, it's accessible. The videos are pretty short and explanatory. So this is a really good base for us. Now, I would love to go into the website. Thank you. So this is our professional learning page that is on the staff internet. And Heather, could I ask you to just click any of those links, like Spring 20 PD paths or any of them? So as you go through this, this is basically where all of the big pieces of our PD are stored, or our PD program are stored. As you go down, you can click through all the links and get really in-depth information. Everything from our catalog to our coaching promo, to the action faction info, to the mentor program overview. And it's all in one place here on the internet for our staff. And then can I ask you to go into the catalog? Thank you, thank you. So every semester and also over the summer, we push out catalogs. And something I really want to stress is that in the years that I've been in this job, I have started to really believe in the power of professionally looking visually appealing catalogs. Because it makes our staff realize how seriously we take professional learning. If you've ever been to a really engaging conference or a convention, or when you did college registration, you get that like tingle of excitement, right? Like, ooh, look at all these cool options. What do I get to take? That is what we want for our staff members. When they open this and it looks professional and it looks engaging and they can see how, how much we respect them by putting together a good catalog. All right. And then finally, our newsletter. So this is our last big communication pillar that we put out regularly. Again, Melinda Mallow, PD specialist, is the captain of this, and she will cater the content based on what the need is at the time. So for instance, she might link in the PD catalog with a reminder to register with a short video saying, hey, here is how to register in case you forgot. As you can see, she's also got some recurring segments. So like a get to know a specialist video that changes every month to try and make our teaching and learning team a little bit more transparent to our staff. This is also where we get staff feedback. So we frequently put in Google forms so that staff can tell us how we're doing. And again, plugging the YouTube channel and the professional learning webpage. So if you were looking at these and you saw a lot of overlap between them, that was intentional. Because we don't want our staff to continually have to hunt around to find information. We want them to be able to find it oh, in the newsletter and on the webpage. We want them to get catalogs sent in a variety of formats. We just want to make it simple. Because that's a key part of effective communication for us. All right, I'm going to go back to the PowerPoint. All right. So this project is one that I'm particularly excited about, the Parent Partnership Library, which I'm going to call the PPL for time's sake. As you know, we have one instructional tech specialist who is focused on creating parent and community facing videos and other resources. This is one of the big projects that she is working on now, the PPL, which is to take our instructional philosophy, why we do things and how we do them, and make it more easily accessible for our community members. So if you look at a big topic like mastery learning, books have been written on that topic. It's, it's a little weighty. But we still want parents to understand it, right? So we are in the process of breaking up a big topic like that into short, two to five minute videos that seek to answer one simple question or go into one small facet. So the video linked in here, which you do not need to click on, is the work behind homework. I mean, please look later, but we don't have to watch the whole thing tonight. This essentially answers the question, does homework count? And the goal is to help parents help their students in understanding how and why homework counts. One piece of a much larger system. So my hope is that in a year, I'm standing here showing you a larger library of this type of videos. There you go. All right. Collaboration. So the Department of Professional Learning, our goal is that we are always working with other departments. Because professional learning, true professional learning, is something that is just baked into the culture, right? It's not something that just one department does. It's not something that only happens on PD days. It's just sewn in. And we can only do that if we are always working with other departments. So one of the biggest things that we have been working on this year is with Lisa Stefan's department, the Equity Initiative. So as you guys know, we did the Action Faction as one of our four PD paths for this fall. The Action Faction was really useful in that it served the Equity Initiative itself. But it also allowed staff members to get in basically at the ground level on this initiative and help forward it by making the change happen using PD time. So this one was one for the go-getters, and it was successful enough to where we are going to re-renew it for spring semester. So this was one specific collaboration. We've also had a ton of opportunity to collaborate with human resources. If you click on that first link, the mentor promo. So we heard from Stephanie Nordstrom last spring that in job fairs, one of the most common questions that they get is what type of mentoring do you offer for new teachers? And so I wanted to make basically an advertisement for the program showing all of the amazing things that we do. So this document right here explains everything from, I guess, our values in the mentor program. If you scroll around to the second slide, or I'm sorry, second page. And then if you scroll down a little further, it kind of gives a sense of what the year-round support actually looks like. So our goal with this is to incentivize teachers to want to come to Round Lake. Because they know, and hopefully they can tell just from this document, we care about their professional learning so much, not just in year one, but in year two and for as long as they stay with our district. So this was a great collaboration because HR now has this material so that when they do go to those job fairs, they're able to say, hey, we will support you. We really care about your learning. And then if we could look at the Chew on This promo too, thank you. So Chew on This is our lunchtime optional open forum. I'm sorry, Heather, to make you keep clicking through those. This is an open forum that we do a couple of times a semester. Basically, it is an open Zoom link and staff comes and they can ask and answer questions on a particular topic. So for instance, we have had them on the topics of teacher leadership. We have had them on, the most popular topic is actually tuition reimbursement. And so HR has been really, really helpful in running some of those tuition reimbursement ones because that is what our staff is most interested in. So Stephanie has actually run these once last semester and once this semester. Just, excuse me, talking in a mask is really hard. So she's actually just come in and kind of run these forums on topics that we know her staff are passionate about. All right. I wanted to talk a little bit about multi-department collaborations, and I think we are almost done with the extra links. The two biggest multi-department collaborations that we do are both induction related. So one of them is called the Round Lake High Five. This is something that you guys have heard about before. The Round Lake High Five is our ongoing onboarding that we do for staff who are hired in the middle of the year. So like a long-term sub, for instance. It's okay. The Round Lake High Five, so yeah, so staff who are hired in the middle of the year, for example, a long-term sub would be someone who would get the Round Lake High Five. It's basically short, pithy, direct videos that help get you the information you need. So if you think about a long-term sub, they need all of the same information that a teacher needs. They just need it faster and simpler and right away, right? They need to know all of the information about how to hook up your tech, tech infrastructure. They need to understand how do I associate my key card to a copier? How do I log into my email, right? So the High Five is something that serves that purpose. And when you get a chance to look at it, it includes videos from so many departments. So it includes tech, communications, HR, instructional tech, teaching and learning, and a few general overview ones. But it's all on one really simple, easy-to-view document. And then actually, same thing for new staff orientation. So if you take a look at that, the new staff orientation is a, I hope visually appealing hyperdoc that we started using as kind of the backbone of our induction for every year. And again, it represents the work of basically every academic and district department we have. So this is what we pushed out to our new staff members this year. Even though induction was live, we wanted to make sure that we had this very easy-to-read, clean, organized, informative hyperdoc that had everything that staff needed at their fingertips. So there wasn't the sense of, oh, here's papers being handed out, oh, you need to check the Google folder, oh, go to this website. It was all pretty clean and, and simple and right there. But again, this would not have happened without that layer of collaboration from other departments. And then finally, there is just a list, I don't want to say smaller, but like of more localized collaborations that we have had with academic departments and even buildings. So we've been working with, especially like our instructional tech specialists, collaborate with content area specialists constantly to make sure that we are embedding tech well into PD and to talk about how tech can elevate the teaching of other subjects. We also have, I wanted to point out one more thing, oh, doing a ton of work with buildings on the building-specific campus pages. Just to make sure that we are always embedding ourselves into best practices with buildings. And then finally, I wanted to talk about our badges. So if you take a look at that badge slide, badging is one of our biggest collaborative efforts that we do. We have multiple badges that are run by other departments. For instance, teaching the whole child, you heard Jen talk about that last month, one of our most popular badges we offer. Co-teaching, and then a couple ones that are very tech-specific. So badging, we're hoping to expand this program in future years by bringing in more departments to collaborate with us. All right, so thank you guys very much for taking a look at all of the different ways that we communicate and collaborate with different departments. I am hoping that I can answer some questions for you.
I, I have a question. We looked at Scott's. I, I do have a question. The, the badging, as you're looking to expand that, you say you're looking for other departments to bring in. Can, can you just give an example of another department you want to bring in to create those badges?
Yes, and I hope that she doesn't mind me mentioning.
Not to put anybody on the spot either, but.
Oh, she's not here, it's fine. No, so Sarah Fontana actually worked, was working with me about making grade band specific badges, like a K through two literacy badge, a three through five literacy badge. Because teaching literacy skills at those ages is a little bit, you know, it's differentiated, right? Like you need different skills with kindergartners than you do with intermediate grades. And so the idea here is that you could become an expert on a level and a subject.
No, that's great. Yeah, I mean, I love the, the whole badging. So that's, that's great that you want to expand it. That, that sounds amazing.
Yeah, in five years, I'm hoping that I'm showing you something that has so many different subjects, that has so many different levels, that there's something for everyone.
Thank you.
On the PPL, on the Parent Partnership Library, did you end up, has that rolled out?
No, we actually just finished editing that one video that is in there. We have another one that's sort of on the editing docket, but it isn't actually finalized yet. And then we're kind of still deciding what the best rollout method is. Like, is it something that we drip out over social media? Is it something that we post on the website and let people see it grow? I could see a good use of it maybe being like videos linked to QR codes at the welcome center. And just really like right on the welcome desk or on, on the wall somewhere, or maybe at parent-teacher conferences. Like, I'm hoping it's another one of those things that it's communicated in so many different ways.
And you said that the Equity Initiative was so popular, or at least the Action Faction. You said you wanted to re-up, was it re-up on the Equity Initiative or on the Action Faction?
The Action Faction is a part of the Equity Initiative. So as Dr. Stefan and I were talking last semester about what PD for equity might look like, we didn't want it to be, here's a hundred slides on equity, now do equity. Like, that's, that's not really what it was about. So part of her goal was to bring in staff members to, to kind of have them help build. And so I think they're related, but we are, we are a subset of what she's doing. It's, actually, I also want to say, it's less about the quantity of staff members in it. It's more about the quality of what they were able to do. And so we're re-upping in that we have more work for them. So the people that are coming back for spring semester that want to do that again, they have like a whole new project list building on what they did in the fall. Did I answer your question? Sorry.
So it's more about the Action Faction process in that initiative is what is re-upping?
I think that's an accurate statement. Yeah, it's, it's more about like trying to make sure that the initiative is being served through the Action Faction, right? Like that they, they have a symbiotic relationship and it's not just, oh, you did this thing for PD and I guess it was focused on equity, that it's actually really productive.
Any additional questions?
Thanks so much for dealing with all my flip-flopping around, and by all means, check through all those links anytime.
Thank you so very much. All right, next up on Communications to the Board was Contracts Under a Thousand. I don't believe we have anything on, on the Contracts Under a Thousand. Hearing nothing there, we will move on to public comment. Members of the public may participate in public comment during regular board meetings by attending in person or by submitting an electronic public comment form. Please note that speakers are limited to three minutes. A link to the electronic public comment form can be found in the electronic documents. Electronic public comments will be accepted up until the time the board reaches public comment section of the meeting, AKA now. Do we have any electronic public comment? Hearing no electronic public comment, do we have any public comment? Hearing no public comment, we will move on then to the superintendent's report and turn it over to Dr. Mendoza.
Thank you, Board President Francisco and Board of Education. The Fox Lake, Round Lake Rotary Club hosted its annual children's holiday party yesterday at Camp Duncan YMCA. Approximately 350 children were invited to attend, two-thirds of whom were Round Lake area students. Children were greeted with breakfast and/or lunch and entertained by Rotary friends and our amazing high school choir. They then proceeded to another area of the facility where they gathered blankets, winter clothing, outerwear, toiletries, candy, and also selected from a room full of toys. This is such a heartwarming event for our children in the Round Lake and Fox Lake areas. I'd like to send a special thanks to the students and staff volunteers that helped make this event possible. 110 volunteers from Round Lake area schools participated in some way. They included the Round Lake High School Student Council and the National Honor Society students, as well as the high school choir, students, teachers, office staff members, bus drivers, administrators, and staff family members. I was there. It's, it's just incredible. If you get a chance at some point to go, just, it's just an amazing opportunity for our kids. The way they have the event laid out and organized is very, very special. And at the end of this train of, it's almost like they're in a department store just picking and stuffing things into a bag. The kids are, they're smiling, they have these, you can see the grins and smiles through the mask. I mean, you can see their cheeks. So just really very touching event and just grateful for the volunteers. Many of our staff members were there, just incredible. We also continue to be grateful for the support that the Round Lake Area School District 116 Educational Foundation provides to our district. The foundation completed their first round of grant applications review and approvals in October. Eight applications were approved totaling almost $5,000. The following staff members were awarded grants. Jeff Kalis, John T. McGee Middle School Cougar Store $1,000. Anna Vexler, Round Lake High School Team Building for Student Council $500. Laura Ritek, John T. McGee Middle School Cougar Creations $420. Megan Rasmussen, Village Graphic Novels $1,000. Elsa Roma and Donna Feltnor, the Round Lake Transition Center Lending Library $750. Trina Harrelson and Matt Rosenberg, Round Lake Transition Center SCL Learning and Recreation $500. Nick Pagars, Natalie Sina and Elizabeth Tucker, Round Lake High School Reading Buddy Library $300. And last, but certainly not least, James Ross, Round Lake Transition Center ARF, ARF Treats Independent Project $375. And lastly, the Chapel of Graves Lake will be distributing winter outerwear items, coats, snow pants and boots to 88 Ellis Elementary children this Friday. This event will be completed via drive-through in the evening. Families of the identified students have received information about the pickup process. The chapel has partnered with Ellis Elementary School on similar projects over the years. We are definitely grateful for their continued support. They've been a great partner. So that concludes this meeting superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Mendoza. Any questions for Dr. Mendoza on the report? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to the Finance Committee update, and Ms. McInley.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Yes, the Finance Committee had a special meeting this evening regarding the scope of work that has been identified. The board remembers we had approved an RFP regarding work with vendor allied facilities partner. And this is a lot of information I'll go through, so I will ask, ask the board to refer to the Finance Committee meeting with all the details. I'll go over more high level of what the work is, the scope of work. Anyway, the, again, using allied facilities partner, the scope of work that we have been, that has been identified is the building automation system, which is a complete district, integration and migration. This moves us away from Johnson's Controls Building Automation System, which is vendor-specific. We cannot use anything other than their product, their materials. It really leaves us vulnerable with some of our systems. Replace a boiler and chiller at the EEC and the ASC. Replace at the high school, it's an RTU 10 mammoth multi-zone unit. And that's two of them here at the high school. And again, replace an RTU unit for Village. There's three, three zones or three sections. And then again, back at the high school for the main entrance. And then again, the building controls at McGee Middle School. Again, those are Johnson Control units. And then, of course, the cost of the project management is noted in there. And then going to exterior lighting, and this is throughout the whole district. Of course, not including the new athletic facilities as that's all new lighting. In our review of the exterior lighting, we did ask administration to review certain areas of lighting. It was brought up at the finance meeting. We know there is lighting issues for both staff parking lots and for our student parking lots. Not adequate lighting, especially now in the fall when it's dark at 3:30, 4 o'clock. And, you know, kids and staff are here late supporting students. We want to make sure that there's adequate lighting when they return to their vehicles. And then common space lighting, interior fixture lighting throughout the district, gymnasium libraries, multi-purpose rooms. Again, getting those fixtures updated. The cost of all this is like eight and a half million dollars. There is some cost to, with our local funds, so it's 12 million dollars of work with $2 million coming out of local funds. This will be paid out of SRR2 and SRR3. Again, if we go back to the scope of the work with the boilers and chillers and lighting, the SRR funding that was, the district received was for this specific scope of work. And that's what we'll be using this for. However, when we look at this, we're including the Beach Project. If you go back to the project list that Dr. Lamping proposed to us two or three meetings ago, it include the work at Beach Elementary, getting those classrooms that are in the library. Remember, they don't have full classroom walls. They're open. And again, that's a safety issue for those students and for that staff at that school. And then again, the parking lot at Murphy. That really is a safety hazard. I don't know if anyone has seen that parking lot. It is, is really a safety hazard. So again, that comes to about 12 million dollars with $2 million coming out of local funds. Some of the questions that have been brought to administration, again, referring back to that list that Dr. Lamping had of all the projects outside the, excuse me, Murphy and Beach, there was other list of projects needing to be done. Also, if we go back to two board meetings ago, the issue with the theater and the sound system, that's $350,000 of work that was proposed as well. Now, some of that money has been earmarked for that project, but again, some money would have to come out of local funds. We had talked about, again, in that previous meeting, there was a grant possible for the one-to-one project, if you recall, with Dan, and they were going to go back to our consultant and see if we could use, if we would qualify for that grant, get that money to pay the one-to-one lease, and we could use those funds, reallocate and use some of those funds for the theater project. Unfortunately, we regret to inform, we do not qualify for that grant, so we would not receive those funds. There's also the issue of doing all these projects and the allocation of the $2 million of funds as we, you know, look at the health and financial health of the, of the district, what it does to our profile score. Currently, we're at recognition status. Obviously, we don't want to lose that status. If, but a good point, these units that we look at, especially in the high school, the ASC and the EEC, they're old and we know they're on their last legs. If those were to go as we, and I don't want to jinx us by saying too much, but as we enter into the season that we are, if those do go down, we have to replace those. Those are going to have to be done. So again, I would ask the board to review the deeper details into the, the. So again, I, I would ask the board to review the, the deeper details into the, the heating and cooling units that we're looking at. The, in ma- asking those questions of, of those projects brought forth, and then the other question we asked the administration is, you know, we have this list of projects, but there are things also that we need to think financially is the education. What is teaching and learning looking for long-term and what does that budget look like? Are, are there's, are there monies there? And in talking with Dr. Kibbins, with using S R two and S R three, and again, if we go back to when we looked at the budget, we held back fifty percent of the funds from S R three. We are comfortable in spending the twelve million, again, two million coming out of local funds and in supporting the project to get a substantial list of projects done that will be of, of great benefit to both the staff and students in the district. And I'll, go ahead, yeah.
So just a, a little bit of perspective. If you remember when we had the comprehensive district assessment done, we have about sixty million dollars in, I wouldn't even say enhancements, their maintenance and upkeep in our facilities. We know we have old buildings. I think, you know, right now, we don't have any borrowing capacity, so even if, again, I don't like using the word, but I just say it, even if we wanted to try to pass referendum, we're at our maximum borrowing limit be after our last referendum, so we don't have any borrowing authority. We are in a position gratefully that we received this S R two, S R three money. We have invested signif- a significant portion of that in the area of teaching and learning, held some of it back to, if you remember, S R two and three is restricted. So it, one of the things that you can do is try to focus on certain, um, projects that affect, you know, HVAC air. And so this is just an opportunity for us to, as Ms. Negretti-McGinley said, get a, a chunk of projects done. And, and just so we're clear, these are the projects that we established as priorities. This wasn't a situation where we had a vendor come in and want to make everything look pretty and pu- pick projects that they, that were priorities for them. We identified the need, uh, Dr. Lamping through her work, her team, the comprehensive assessment, these are things that we selected. And at some point, we have to start picking these projects off and getting them done. Can't even come close to doing them all at once. But when we have an opening and we have opportunities like this, we just have to, to proceed. The other thing I'll share lastly is, given the scope, um, we're not asking for formal approval tonight. We're hoping to bring the contract back to the next meeting. But prior to asking for your approval, we, given the project scope, we will put a fairly, we're, we're going to put a pre- a little bit of a presentation together for you, so it's not just a verbal overview. Um, so we're, we're going to plan on doing that for the next meeting. So I, I appreciate your update. It was really thorough, so.
Yeah, of, of course, yeah. I'd like, Dr. Mendoza, it will come to the next meeting. They will have a, a presentation. Uh, but you'll see in the board finance packet, just an Excel doc that gives, uh, great detail of what, uh, the HVACs that we're looking to update.
And this is a quick question, and maybe Dr. Lamping can expound on a little bit, but in reviewing that Excel document, there were several different ones in there where we're getting into, eh, as part of the project, the roof is also changing, uh, lighting and moving over to LED lighting, et cetera, which will have long-term savings attached to it. So maybe talk a little bit about that between rebates and between the potential long-term savings of switching over to LED lighting.
Yes, there are a number of projects with the, um, where they have to do deduct work, they have to take out the ceiling, they're going to automatically replace some of the lighting in there and updating those outside of the two additional projects, the common spaces and the exterior. So we'll have a bonus of that. There is a rebate that would be automatic and then there'll be a long-term savings that will occur with each of those projects, and those are listed on that spreadsheet. Um, the, the external, the, the ones that are wrapped up, those savings aren't as fleshed out yet, but, uh, the other ones are.
Thank you. So again, well, I know in looking at the packet, you'll see some savings there and you'll see a lot of TBDs. So keep in mind that it's going to, long-term health for the district as well, that we'll be able to start recouping some of that back as the years click off.
And I, I think also highlight in the presentation that they'll bring to the board next board meeting on the twenty, twentieth. So, but again, in reviewing the scope of work, taking into account, you know, looking at the budget, or, you know, looking at the financial health of the district, the, the, using the S R funding for its original intent, again, making sure the financial health of the di- district, knowing what we need to do for the education of our students and the list of projects in its entirety and its totality that Dr., uh, Lamping had brought to us previously. The finance committee is comfortable in supporting and recommending that we move forward with this project as listed.
Any additional questions?
Oh, no, no, everything, no.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti-McGinley. Excellent presentation as always.
Thank you, and we'll move on to some minutes. All right. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Francisco, seconded by Ms. Klingler. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes, and the motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda for the accounts payable report for one million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-two cents, and the employment report dated December sixth, twenty twenty-one. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Klingler, seconded by Mr. Jewitt. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
The consent agenda carries. Next up, we have introduction of new administration.
So it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Ted Richter. Uh, Ted, Ted and his wife Sue live in Graves Lake, Illinois. They are proud parents of three boys, ages twenty-seven, twenty-five, and twenty-two. Ted and Sue met in high school and both grew up in Libertyville. He graduated from Bethel University in St. Paul, Minnesota with a bachelor's degree in business management. Other than his college years in Minnesota, he and Sue have been residents of Lake County. Throughout their son's school years, Ted has enjoyed being a participant in their educational activities and sporting events as a parent, fan, and coach. He has been a youth sponsor, mentor, and group facilitator for junior high and senior high-aged kids, both in church and community settings. In addition, Ted managed and expanded a local upward basketball program in Gurnee, Illinois, as well as partnered with organizations in West Virginia to build and repair homes and a community center for underprivileged families. Professionally, Ted has owned and operated a trucking business in Waukegan, Illinois for over thirty years, managing multiple projects and collaborating with local and state governments, schools, and local businesses in an effort to support their organizations. He and his wife enjoy renovating homes together and live a very active lifestyle. They spend their free time in North Woods, Wisconsin, participating in a variety of outdoor activities. What Ted didn't, um, share in his bio are what led me to believe that he is the best person for this position. The qualities of his character and his work ethic, his understanding of the importance of developing and relationships with those whom he works with internally and externally, his interest in collaborating with others, often guiding and coaching, but also listening and learning, his understanding of the need for accountability individually and collectively, his ability to problem-solve and develop a plan to achieve the best results and then carry the plan out. It is a great pleasure that I welcome the new director of facilities, Mr. Ted Richter.
Thank you, Dr. Lamping. I personally want to thank Dr. Mendoza, Dr. Lamping, and the Board of Education this evening for allowing me to have the privilege to serve you as the director of facilities in the school district. I look forward to working with all of you. It's, it's a, it's a great honor to now say that I'm going to be a member of this family in the Round Lake Area School District. And I, I appreciate, um, just all that you do here as educators. I look forward to it, um, and I thank you again just for allowing me this opportunity. I, I, it's a, it's a pure privilege, so.
Well, Ted, you should have said "we" because you're part of the team now, right? So we.
Yes, so, but thank you again.
All right, we'll go on to old business. I need a motion to approve the Round Lake High School Athletic Sponsorship Program.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tavera, seconded by Mr. Jewitt. Any additional questions?
I just have a quick one. The, uh, you guys support it, right?
Yes, I was just going to add, uh, the finance committee, this did come to the finance committee. We did review it. Uh, we did spend a great deal of time, uh, with Mrs. Bennett, Dr. Kibbins, um, and Becky Moran, uh, giving our feedback and, um, it was taken very seriously and it, uh, really reflected the needs of the district, uh, both financially and legally.
And just a clarification, I know it, it was included in there, but the back of the scoreboard is still TBD.
Right, we're still waiting for those price quotes.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, meaning the score and time part of it, right?
You're talking about the back of the scoreboard? Yeah.
So the advertising is still an option right away, but the, it's the score and the time on the back that still needs to be discussed.
Right, we're waiting for the price quote, right? Yeah.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Yeah, you did roll call, because you have a motion on the floor. So we just need the roll call.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes, and motion carries.
All right, I need a motion to approve the board member travel reimbursement for the joint annual conference in the amount of one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lee, seconded by Mrs. Klingler. Any additional questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
And motion carries.
I need a motion for the approval of the Peekaboo Yearbook Contracts.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Francisco, seconded by Mrs. Klingler. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
And motion carries. All right, next up, we are to the positive occurrences part of the agenda. That means we're looking at you, Jennifer.
I was just going to say, over Thanksgiving, I went to watch the boys' basketball and their Thanksgiving tourney. I know it's a young team, but they, they, they look promising. They look good. So hopefully people will come out and support them, and I know the girls' basketball team had some games going, so they look good as well, so hopefully people will come out and watch. I'll add one more for next Sunday. The, uh, cheer team has their first competition at Stevenson High School, so people can come out and support.
I know the funny thing is bowling has a big tournament down in Joliet this coming Saturday, but I'm picking up my, uh, old, the older daughter from Bloomington tomorrow, so I'm like, I'm not going back to Joliet after that, so. But again, it's the, the expansion that we got, the, the bowling team is heading to Joliet and going out to these bigger tournaments downstate, which is just great exposure for the program and for the students.
I have one, I have one brief one, just, I know this is going to seem, but we're into December and we've stayed open. I mean, we, we have our kids in school and we're into December. We have a, you know, a little bit of a sprint toward the finish line for the end of the year, but, um, it's really a result of a collective effort of our families, our kids, our staff. Um, I'm just honestly, as a superintendent, grateful that we've been able to have our kids in school, so. Um, it's gone, I, I don't know how to say this, but I can't believe it's December already. Um, and we're almost halfway through the year, so just really, really feel good about that.
As we can't find any real wood. All right, hearing no others, no other questions in regards to future agenda items. It will be our next one up. Anybody have any future agenda items they'd like to put on the docket for the administration to address? Hearing nothing there, we will then move into a session of closed session. So I'll need a motion to convene in closed session as permitted by statute five ILCS one twenty slash two for the purpose of discussing the following. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on the complaint logs against an employee, a specific individual who serves as a dependent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting that considers increasing compensation to a specific employee that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and must be open to the public. Five ILCS one twenty slash two C one. And discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for the purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by section two point oh six, five ILCS one twenty slash two C twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, seconded by Ms. Lee. No questions from you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
All right, we are in closed session, so we're.
All right, we're back in open session. I need a motion to authorize the board president to issue a decision on behalf of the Board of Education denying the grievance submitted by thirteen employees on October eighth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, seconded by Ms. Lee. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes of the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular board meeting.
So moved, second. Motion by Mr. Jewitt, seconded by Mr. Francisco. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler? Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
And the motion carries. All right, and at nine oh seven PM on December sixth, we are adjourned. We will see everyone in two weeks on, what is it, December twentieth? Thank you.